We will call to order the August 28, 2023 Board of Trustees regular meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda which includes approval of the consent agenda items?
I so move.
Moved by Ms. Watley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bailey. Any discussion? Then we will vote.
Ms. Trudy, I'll voice vote aye.
And the motion passes. Is there a motion to convene into executive session to consider items covered by attorney-client?
Aye, so move.
Moved by Ms. Watley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kelly. Any discussion? We will vote. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Session to conduct the regular business meeting. Moved by Ms. Watley, seconded by Mr. Calhoun. If you will vote. Dr. Temple, if you will please vote. And the motion passes. Is there a motion to approve as received? The minutes of July 17th COW and board meetings? The special called meetings of July 21st, August 12th, and August 21st, and the August 14th COW meeting?
I so move.
Moved by Ms. Watley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bailey. If you will vote. And the motion passes. Owned to the next item, our moment of silence, and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. If we can take a moment, please, to remember the passing of a student Bradley Lee in July, who was a student at Beckham, and an employee David Warren, who last week we lost. And please consider those that are somewhere in the path of a storm. And after a moment, then I'll ask Mr. Grabowski to lead us in the pledge. I'm in.
... to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for freedom, and one thing indivisible with liberty and
Ms. Bailey, public comments?
When I call your name, please come forward. Brianna Bogan and Robert Simmons.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Brianna Bogan, and I am a member of the Charleston Forum, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak to you all this evening. On behalf of the Charleston Forum and over 200 people who attended our April 13th convening regarding the tri-county communities centered on their expectations for our education system and our school boards. I'm here to request time on your agenda to discuss the findings of our meeting, as well as submit a presentation and summarize results that we will share directors from the communities for their school board chairs and superintendents. While receiving individual board member responses are well appreciated, we are requesting time on the official agenda. There's been a history of the district seeking information and input from the community. Without any action, we urge the board to not perpetuate this history. Thank you.
Hey there, I'm Robert Simmons. I was, I'm here to talk about the calendar decisions. I was involved in the groups that was put together to look at those. And being a parent and not a employee of the CCSD, it was great to actually be involved in it. I mean, the reach out was great. Vanessa was awesome. I'm a big supporter of calendar option three. When the calendar was announced last year, and there's a little bit of the public pushback. I started looking at other calendars, and I saw where like Georgetown and York were going to a modified calendar that had the two one-week breaks. I thought it'd be awesome for the kids and teachers to get this time to to rest and recharge throughout the school year. I know for me and my children, it would be great to be able to travel with them and to take them to Disney in October or February when it's, you know, 70, 80 degrees, as opposed to the second week of August when it's 300 degrees. From what I've read, the report like from York and from Georgetown, it's been overwhelmingly supported having these two breaks. I think York, like 75% of the people who voted, voted in that direction. I think it'd be great for teachers. If I was a teacher, I'd want that calendar personally to have that extra time to travel when it's not peak tourist season and prices aren't through the roof. I would like to point out that having those two weeks was the second highest priority of the survey that went out, was to add those weeks on top of longer weeks, which I really don't understand that question. But it was nice to see it was, it was the second highest priority. I had a lot more to say, but I'm running out of time. On my Facebook, one of my old teachers from Wando actually commented when I was talking about this, and she said that "I would have loved a calendar like this when I was teaching." Three exclamation marks. "Week-long travel opportunities in October, November, December, and January, and February, and April." Wow. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And now a review of our online comments. We had one comment for discrimination, one for racism, six for academic calendar, two for policy liaison, one for superintendent welcome, public comments to school curriculum, one mass, one, for a total of 15 online comments. That concludes online and public comments.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. We are on to item 6A, out-of-county request to remain pursuant to South Carolina Code 59-6340. Is there a motion to approve the parents' request that the students be allowed to remain enrolled as out-of-county residents by providing tuition for both students and transportation and with space available at the school?
I so move.
Moved by Dr. Temple, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Watley. If you will please cast your vote and then confirm its accuracy as it appears in the upper part of your screen.
Ms. Watley? Yeah, I was I had a little concern about the wording, but
and the motion passes. The next item B is 6B, is there a motion to approve a recommended position and interim employee hire?
So move. Second. Whoever you want.
Shall we go alphabetically instead of numerically?
Sure.
Moved by Mr. Calhoun and seconded by Ms. Waters. If you will please cast your vote. And the motion fails. The next item, is there a motion to approve the requested reassignment?
So if there's no motion, we go on to the next agenda item.
On to the next agenda item. Constituent District 9 contractual matter. Is there a motion to approve negotiation of the real estate purchase contract?
I so move.
Moved by Ms. Watley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Roberson. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes. Item E, is there a motion to approve the ground lease with Patterson's Academy?
I so move.
Moved by Mr. Calhoun, seconded by Ms. Watley. If you will cast your vote. And the And the motion passes. The school readiness report, Dr. Galian?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I won't read the PowerPoint to you. I'm just gonna go over some of the key areas. I would share with you that myself, along with the cabinet, we worked diligently to make sure that the schools were open and ready for the start of the school with the students. We had a very exciting kickoff. I had an opportunity to ride the bus with the students, share that experience with them, and as you know, high school students don't really engage with adults that much. So wasn't too much conversation going on, but it was a great experience, great experience to say the least. From there, I began to go around and visit schools, which I'll get into a little bit later. But I want to share some of the highlights from the various departments about what they did to prepare the schools and prepare the teachers with the support they need. So the areas for academic, kicked off the symposium over the summer, made sure that students, I mean, the teachers understood the instructional framework, the professional learning community training that went through, the training and development opportunities around the core teaching and learning and making sure that they were shored up in those areas. They hosted a really great, great teachers, great leaders, new teacher orientation. That was an excellent event and gave those educators an opportunity to learn more about the district and learn what the supports were available to them. I had the firsthand experience of going through and seeing the Department of Exceptional Children host a summit for their classified and certified staff, and I had the opportunity to witness those professional development opportunities, which were great. And then the student information and assessment and evaluation team supported families and schools during the registration process to make sure they had proper provisions in place moving forward. With human resources, we had a really great team effort to make sure that human resources as a collective worked diligently to make sure they filled as many vacancies as possible. We ended up with 35 classroom teacher vacancies, which is not bad for a district this size. We have 500 classroom teachers hired and onboarded during the hiring process in the season. 97.6 average substitute rate, teacher rate fills, we're done. And we're really excited about that. And then we continue to push our pathways to teaching and giving those various programs to support and attention that they need. So we had 36 teach Charleston candidates, nine new men of Charleston teach residents, and then 11 new C cap, okay? C cap residents. So kudos to that department as well. Operations, starting off with transportation, we really had minimal complaints this year. It was down from, not minimal, but I would say it was down from last year. We had 96%, there's never minimal complaints about transportation. And so we had, what's really good is that they, that 96% rate of staffing, and which is amazing when you try to service students and families in a, a large organization like this. Our security efforts were really put forth in a positive way. We had 51 of the 56 school crossing guards filled. I'm excited about that because we made sure our students and scholars were supported and were safe as they were transitioning to school. 19 of the 23 school security officers were filled. And then we had successful kickoffs of various football events, including the jamboree. From a facility standpoint, as I went around and saw schools, I was really impressed with the commitment from the facilities team to make sure our schools were clean and ready, had great curb appeal, and I didn't see any of it, but it was reported to me that only one school had a cleaning complaint. Now, throughout those visits, I also noticed that we had some challenges with HVAC, as you can imagine. When it's this hot, you're gonna have some challenges. But I would say kudos to the team because they did the very best to make sure they got those systems up and running and online so that our students and teachers could have some comfortable environments. Now, through the technology, we had some challenges with some connectivity issues. You'll hear more about that. Nutritional services, kudos to them, 98% staff, and we served over 20,000 lunch meals served on the first day at school. Incredible. And the kids liked the food, too.
Okay, sounds good.
Well, I would say this, Mr. Berori would ask when he was in the buildings with me, and he would ask his kids, how do you like the food? And overwhelmingly, they said, it was great. Nursing services, it was good to see them in action and in the buildings. The buildings that I went through, every building, I made sure I paid attention to where our nursing services looked like. So that was encouraging that we have a 97% staffing rate. And then I, I won't bore you with all of the, the various projects that went on, but there's quite a few. And I would honestly say that where I thought there were maybe been some challenges based on some of the progress that was made over the summer, and I was never let down when I went to the campus and nevertheless saw those projects completed. And the staff from the operations team met me on the, on the sites, made sure if I had any questions, they answered those questions, and I was encouraged by what I saw. And so we had a lot of projects going on across the district and overwhelmingly was in, was very pleased with what I saw. So that was how the school got kicked off. I'm excited now that the, the real work of what we do is, is here, and we get a chance to see it in action. And I'm excited about all the work that the staff has done to make sure that our teachers, our administrators, and our support staff are very well prepared to start continuing to move the achievement gap. So thank you.
Thank you for those details. On to our next item.
Chair, can we ask some questions?
Yes, we'll start down here.
Yeah, I, because it was a pretty, when I looked at your presentation online through the board docs, I just had really, because I'd never seen the word before. And I asked a lot of parents about it. Instructural framework expectations rolled out to all school leaders. What's that? I just need some clarity.
Sure. So at the Charleston Educator Symposium, all of our school leaders and the accompanying team members who attended the symposium with them had the opportunity to hear from Deputy Superintendent Huggins, myself, the Associate Superintendent, on what we expect in terms of delivery, plain and simple. When scholars are in classrooms and teachers are standing in front of them, there's some basic standard of instructional care that we like to see in terms of how we deliver a lesson. Regardless if it's a kindergarten classroom or a high school classroom, there's some basic elements to just solid teaching and learning. And so that instructional framework outlines, specifies, dictates for our teachers more or less what the basic is. Not that they can't show their flavor or their, you know, their personality in lessons, but there's just a basic level of instruction that should be happening across the entirety of the system that we want to ensure that our children have the benefit of. And so we started the process in terms of an orientation, but we intend with the Curriculum Instruction Department to build out, develop, and roll this out in its entirety during the course of the academic year. So bottom line is, it's the nuts and bolts, the essence of good, solid teaching and learning.
Because that sounds like at a very high level. Obviously, it's not our job to get down into the weeds, but it's more of, I think, a transparency side when parents see words like that to figure out somehow how we can get it there. You know, I love when I hear involvement like in the calendar, but it was happy with that process. And then I heard from teachers that attended the conference how happy, you know, the, how successful that was. But you know, when we use these, you know, big words, frameworks, and all this stuff, it just seems, you just get somehow, you know, through the website or something that this is, you know, what we're doing. So it's not something just out of the blue. Appreciate it.
Any other questions for Dr. Galian, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Waters, Ms. Bailey?
I have one. My question is, when you opened up with 35 classroom teacher vacancies, what is the district doing to fill those vacancies? And how many schools is those 35 vacancies spread across?
Though as far as the specific schools, I will have to send that in a board brief or an update, if that's okay. And it's quickly still changing, to be honest. It's an ongoing type thing. The 35 vacancies, though, 11 or 12 are covered right now by substitute teachers. And then in some cases, schools may have collapsed classes or done some other, other things to cover the classes. Some of the HR staff is here. I don't think we've had any emergency calls. Susan and April have been in the, kind of in the middle of coordinating with principals, so any alarm bells? But I'm happy to send something out by the end of the week if that were.
Oh, thank you. I just want to make sure that parents know that those vacancies are, are gonna be filled, and we're gonna do it as soon as possible.
Yes, ma'am. Special ed is the struggle. I will tell you that. There's about 25 or 27 of special ed. So we're working directly with, with Beverly Pilkey's group.
Thank you.
Swatley, so my question was also around the teacher vacancies and the 500. How that was in relation to the, the deficit that we had, and how many more do we have to go? Do we only have 35 vacancies? And were those 500 onboarded brand-new hires?
So the 500 are new to the district, so they could be a brand-new teacher, you know, out of a college program or experienced teacher that was recruited to Charleston. Our compensation, I would say, is helping us with recruitment, so we greatly appreciate that. As far as, what was the other part about the 500? Sorry, I'm.
So you and I had a conversation several months ago about the teacher deficit.
Right.
And so in relation to where we were during that conversation, the 500 onboarded, where they knew that they fill that deficit, and the 35 vacancies, is that all that we have left to cover, or do we still have more vacancies?
Well, when we say all, it does change, and we, last year during the school year, probably posted another 65 or so, where we had teachers that maybe resigned for whatever reason, some were valid reasons, et cetera. So it will, for us, it's a 12-month recruitment process, but that's where we stand right now. Now, we'll go into our 10-day count where we meet with principals, look at their enrollment, and make sure, based on enrollment, they earn their positions. So that's part of a process, too, that may, you may see a school that did not earn a position, so we may need to do some type of transfer, make a decision there. But I will tell you, considering the pipeline issues that all school districts are facing, I'm extremely excited to say that we have 35 vacancies, knowing that we have about 3,800 teachers. And I just want to thank the board because I, I think with all the PR that, that was out there about the compensation, even though the budget wasn't approved till July, I think that added a lot to our teachers, retaining our teachers, and then new teachers coming on board.
And then I just have one more question, and this might be a pipe dream, but this is in relation to the number of teachers we have in comparison to the class size. What are the, you know, can we possibly get to a place where we can get teachers either a reduced class size or additional support in the classroom sizes that they currently have?
That's a much bigger conversation that Jackie would need to be involved with around allocations to schools. And, and it does, Mrs. Watley started to get back into pipeline issues, too, if we start to have small classroom sizes, and we do in some of our schools, of course. And Dr. Galian touched on some of our pathways on that slide. There are, I think, probably close to 10 pathways that HR is coordinating with either colleges and universities for alternative route programs. So we're continuing to grow our own teachers.
Thank you. Mr. Calhoun, Ms. Roberson?
I don't have a question, but I would like to say thank you to all of you for doing the great work that you do. I visited several of my school's buildings. Were beautifully clean, kids were excited. I went to back-to-school, Vashes, and everyone seemed excited and happy. So just thank you for your hard work.
Dr. Temple?
I too was glad to see that our schools opened and our email boxes weren't filled with complaints, so that was really good. I really enjoyed the professional development that was going on prior to school. I tried to visit many of those programs and sites, and I was very impressed with that. And I'm looking forward to the new cafeteria food. I love school lunch.
Thank you. We will go on.
Can I just have one follow-up question, Madam Chairman?
Sure.
On the 10-day count this year, unlike last year. So the 10-day count, when do you anticipate getting that in?
Yeah, so what happens is there's, even after the schools submit their account in Power School or upgrade, excuse me, up, update their information in Power School, there's a reconciliation that has to take place. So before we actually have seven-day, 10-day certified numbers, it takes about two weeks.
About two weeks, and then how fast are we gonna act on reapportion, reapportionate, reapportioning the teachers? Because it seemed like last year it was 45, 50 days, and it just seems like kind of, you know, harsh to start a child with one class and then suddenly move the teacher to another class because we have to reapportion.
Right. We've already started having those conversations with Cabinet, and we're trying to move on that a lot quicker than we did last year.
Thank you. We're on to item 8A, the ESER progress, a D-23 report from the principals. If you all would kindly introduce yourselves as you.
Well, it's just me. So Chairwoman McKinney, Dr. Galian, and members of the school board, thank you for the opportunity to share the D-23 Community Schools Collaborative. I am here supporting our wonderful principals in D-23, Jason Drayton at Baptist Hill Middle High School, Jamarla Logan over at Jane Edwards Elementary School, and Ashlyn Timoney at Mini Hughes Elementary School. So I really appreciate the opportunity to talk about it, the D-23 Schools Community Collaborative, because it's really important. The work that we're doing out in D-23 is truly important. We're having some great progress, and so this is sort of like our why for wanting to move forward with the work.
And Mr. Dallas?
Yes, ma'am.
Before you get started, do you mind if I?
I don't mind at all.
Brag on you and your team a little bit?
Okay.
Yes, sir. This, this presentation is in response to a plethora of questions that you all have had about ESER spending and how we spend ESER funding, how we determine how we spend, what we spend, why we spend it, and who spends it. And so you've heard a lot about three different community projects. One downtown in District 20, spearheaded by Janice Malone and a group of principals and Barbara Delagarde. The second in District Four, led by Henry Darby, a few other principals. And the third, led by the great James Dallas, who's here tonight. I think Mr. Dallas has Kayla Clark. I think I saw Kayla back there with him. And also Vic Young. Vic, would you stand up? Vic is a partner in this work for District 23. And this team, led by these men, have come together enthusiastically to change outcomes for kids in Hollywood. And so what you're gonna hear Mr. Dallas talk about is how he and a great team use data to determine in a feeder pattern plan what was needed for children and how he intends to use several million dollars with his colleagues to change outcomes. And so, Mr. Dallas, on behalf of all of us, we want to thank you for your leadership and for the time you and a great team have dedicated to this work. And thank you for sharing with our board in response to their many inquiries about why we do, what we do, and how we do it. Thank you.
Absolutely. My pleasure. And again, I'm representing the other principals from D-23, so it's not me alone. It's, it's us as a collab- Absolutely. My pleasure. And again, I'm representing the other principals from D twenty three. So it's not me alone. It's it's us as a collective, uh, collective group. So when we think about D twenty three and why that Community Schools Collaborative is important in our area. Our principals have been working very hard over the last few years to bring about change in the community, and it starts with our schools. And as we sat down and really looked through the S R proposals and the American Rescue Plan, we unpacked that. And for us as principals, five key themes uh, began to emerge. And that first one was whole community engagement. Our parents in D twenty three are genuinely interested in supporting the schools in a way that supports our students. And so as principals, it's so important for us to make sure that we are engaged with every member of that community, entrepreneurs, other community leaders, coaches, pastors. All of these people who are authentically interested in making sure that we make a difference in twenty in in D twenty three. So and because we are intentional, we really believe in the feeder pattern model. It's been around for a long time and we really believe in it. And because we are intentional in 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 organizing organizing ourselves in that way. We've had conversations about making sure that we are aligned around key initiatives, key programming, using the same language, uh, engaging our teachers in the same kind of training. So when we get together, you know, with with one another across schools, within schools, we have this common focus and a shared purpose with respect to how we want to educate our students. That also builds that community continuity as well, making sure that we have folks uh, in the community who are supportive of the work that we do, who can come into the building, support us in any way possible. Uh, and 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 what we feel is that that really strengthens our neighborhood, right? It strengthens our neighborhood in a way that calls on everyone in the neighborhood to recognize what their role, the role that they play and making sure that we have strong schools out in D twenty three. Everyone understands their role. Everyone's willing to be able to support the work that's going on in the schools and 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 all of that. At the end of the day, the strength of our work really is an increasing community collective efficacy. Because when we commit to create that community collective efficacy, that affects the community's response to the beliefs and the that they have about our children and the capacity that we have to educate our children and to help their dreams become a reality down the road. So that's why we felt like it was so important uh, in our community. So I I I won't bore you with some of the language of S S three, because I'm sure some of you lived and breathed that for so many years, but it's just a little bit of context. Uh, a lot of those funds are created to support our schools and communities in helping students recover and reconnect with the schools after the pandemic that we all had to uh, endure. And as a board, you are very bold in creating this vision of having all students read on grade level by fifth grade in spring twenty twenty seven. And for us, that was sort of like a launch launch pad. Okay, so what are we going to do uh, in D twenty three to make sure uh, that we can meet that goal? You also articulated this bold vision related to the three pillars, rigorous instruction, high quality teachers and leaders, and wraparound services. And that was really important. We took that very seriously. So our response to that was pulling together key members of the community to engage them in a series of conversations uh, at Ellington about what our options are. What are we going to do collectively as a community? Not what Ellington's going to do, not what Baptist Hill is going to do, or not Mini Hughes or 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 Jane Edwards. What are we going to do collectively to make sure that we are setting our kids on our trajectory of of excellence? And so we had the luxury of partnering with the the Auburn S E Initiative out of the University of South Carolina to really think about the viability and sustainability of this community schools approach. And 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 so just a quick story. So so Ms. Clark and I were were on duty one day, as we are every day, bus duty and 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 car duty. And I get this call from the front office, this young man named Vic Young is here to see you. It's like, I don't have a meeting with Vic Young. Who is this person? Yeah, we we had things going on. So I told him, tell him to come back another day. You know, we're just too busy right now. But then I started to feel a little bit bad bad about that. Because I pride myself on visiting with every parent who comes to my building. He wasn't a parent, you know, but I pride myself on visiting with people who come to the building. So I finally went up and talked with Vic and I'm tell you, it was the best fifty minutes of my life because I learned at that point that we were really aligned with what we envisioned for D twenty three. And so I'm happy that we're able to partner with him and uh, and and do this heavy lift uh, out in out in the community. Uh, and so we continue to um, work along with our community members, uh, thinking about what the hopes and dreams are for D twenty three. We had a series of meetings, meeting after meeting after meeting to talk about what we need to put in place to to make sure that this dream for our kids came to came through. The the next slide is just some allow some expenses, some allowable uh, ways of using the S R funds. But what resonated with us was a community schools model, having a community schools model out in D twenty three. And so where we landed in terms of addressing those three pillars of support, full service community schools, collective impact and the science of reading, full service schools as schools as the hub of the community. If you ask any principal in D twenty, probably all over the district, but especially D twenty three, how they see themselves. We see ourselves as the hub of the community. That's where the work begins and ends. That's where all of the good things for our community begin to happen and where our parents want to be uh, engaged. And then when we think about uh, collective impact, you know, making sure that we have the set of practices that are uh, that keeps our community engaged. We don't want to have one or two conversations. We want to continuously engage our community in the work. We want to continue to evaluate the work. We want their input. We want to make sure that we're being very transparent about what we're doing. And more importantly, that they are involved from day one. And and seriously, and definitely the science of reading. I mean, we all know that the science of reading is really about how to teach kids how to read and to comprehend text. And we're seeing some results because of that. All of our teachers have participated in letters training. Uh, and so we are aiming to also provide uh, uh, more uh, training in that area throughout the district as a collective group. Um, so we uh, we we've been taking this cradle to a career perspective. We had our approach aims to uh, work cohesively as a feeder pattern to create seamless experiences for our students. Uh, create uh, connect and connect families, community and community resources for the betterment of our of our families and can seek to continue this partnership beyond the S R funding. Um, just some highlights. Uh, we have a very bold plan, but just some highlights from some of the things that we had included in in the plan were the feeder pattern academic planning time, making sure that we provide opportunities for teachers to get together, whether in the school or across schools vertically. Uh, to make sure again that we are tight with our instructional practices and the instructional framework that Ms. Simmons talked about earlier. We want to make sure that we are communicating and articulating what those expectations are. Professional learning workshops around the science of reading. We want that to continue in D twenty three. I'm sure we want that to continue across the district. But we definitely wanted to continue in D twenty three because we're seeing amazing results from our students right now. And we can attribute a lot uh, to the science of reading and professional development that we've engaged in. Uh, we all have these incredible coaches in our building who come with a whole uh, with with wealth of knowledge about best instructional practices. But sometimes those coaches work in silos, so we want to get them out, working with one another, you know, in these monthly coaching huddles facilitated by some of our friends from the state. Just to make sure that they are continuing to improve uh, and strengthen their uh, instructional practices. They support principals and schools and leading the way instructionally. Around pillar two, uh, we are uh, excited about our school based community learning and collaboration opportunities again within and across uh, the D twenty three district. I spoke with uh, Mr. Davis about site support for the science of reading, having folks from the district come into our building. You know, to walk the school with us and instructional coaches to provide support and feedback for our teachers as they're implementing uh, the instructional uh, framework. Teaching materials, we ask our teachers to do a lot of things and we got to make sure that they've got the materials and supplies to be able to carry out the mission. So we want to make sure that that's happening as well. Uh, at pillar three, all of these partners that we're working with, uh, we've we've established some really exciting relationships and it's all about cradle to career, making sure that we have the supports and the resources in place necessary to meet the needs of our families and our students so that they can actualize their dreams. That's really what it's all about. Um, so we're very excited about that. So we've we've, as I said, we've established a lot of partnerships uh, with uh, several people uh, throughout uh, throughout the the area uh, and at the state level. And uh, I have no doubt that uh, as we continue to move forward with this work, we're going to see amazing results in D twenty three. You guys are going to be really proud of the work that we do. You're going to ask me to come back here with my colleagues and present some data to say, how did we do it? And we're going to tell you how we did it. Uh, and because we're going to do it together. So I know that I speak for all my D twenty three colleagues when I say that we're very excited about the possibilities uh, that lie in furnace in front of us and we're eager uh, to begin the work. And I want to thank you all for the part that you've played uh, in making this possible. And we look forward to your continued support and engagement in the future. So thank you all so much.
That was so very thorough. I suppose there will be more commendations than questions, but I don't want people to hop on me. So I will start at this end so we can quickly get to D twenty three. Dr. Temple?
Great. Thank you so much for this presentation. I am someone who has researched community schools and I am a strong supporter of that model because I believe the strength of our educational process is in the school and in the teachers. And when we develop community schools, we bring in our parents and we bring in the partners of the community. So I I can't tell you, I didn't realize I I was hearing from this um, Dunmire about the D D twenty three, but I had no idea that it was in the community schools model um, for reform. So I think the work that you're doing with the feeder pattern is um, the way to go. Um, it's very important that the feeder pattern is strong and that the students are moving through that system. There's a lot of collaboration, both horizontally and and vertically. So I I'm just really excited um, to hear this. I'm looking forward um, to the data. And I hope that the work that you're doing will help be a model for some of our other feeder patterns and districts. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Roberson?
Yes, um, can you see my smiles? I am tickled pink and peacock proud. Thank you so much, Mr. Dallas, for your leadership um, with this community um, and schools collaboration. Let me speak to my colleagues. This is real. I've been a part of it. Um, we look forward to coming back later and presenting you real data.
Mr. Calhoun?
Much more than what they just said. Y'all are doing amazing work out there. And um, you know, when we, that's exactly what we asked for, data supported evaluation, so we can know what is still work, what what worked with that money that's sunsetting, that we can well, push it forward through the rest of the district. Because if it's working for you all out there, we can definitely take to take this and expand it throughout the rest of the district. So that data supported evaluation that we can come forward and put more money behind it. And not say, oh, that's cost too much. We got to put more money behind it because it's not going to work. We got to put some type of resources behind it. So just keep doing that for us and I appreciate it.
Ms. Watley?
So I will start off with uh, commending you on your professionalism. Every time you come to approach us, you're always very professional, very articulate.
Thank you.
Uh, you have a great sense of um, attention to detail and your fashion sense is.
That's my wife.
The tie of. But uh, and serious note, I would very much like to come out and visit and see what you've got going on out there. And perhaps um, kick around some ideas that I've even spoken with Ms. Roberson about uh, that I think would be beneficial to um, the community out there. And uh, so um, perhaps I can't do it on a Friday, which is usually when they try to set these things up. But perhaps we can communicate about a Tuesday morning or something like that, if that would work for you.
Absolutely. We would welcome that.
All right.
Great.
Ms. Bailey?
Nothing. Excellent presentation. Thanks for all you guys do out there.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Ms. Waters?
It's all been said. Amazing presentation. I do have a question for, I think, folks at the district level. Um, so one of the things I'm thinking about, and this may not be a real impediment, but I'm just wondering. Um, when we sort of set these things up, you know, we did D twenty, we did D twenty three. Uh, there are communities that have a kind of clearly defined boundary. It's kind of easy to wrap, you know, your hands around. But some of the districts that were just really crazily gerrymandered um, are not as easy to sort of get your arms around the feeder patterns and that sort of thing. Is that an impediment? And is it something you're thinking about? And perhaps it's not, but I just really think about the geographic boundaries a lot um, in terms of how we take and scale something like this.
Thank you for that, Ms. Waters. I've I'm honest to a fault. It's not something that we've spent a whole lot of time um, thinking about. We responded really to the principals in these communities um, and what where we saw the patterns of student performance to draft this sort of initial response to developing some sort of support. But the question raises a lot of thoughts in my head that we'll certainly write down to consider as we look at the success of these programs um, or the data from these programs to determine exactly how we scale them.
Yeah, and just to add some context, I'm thinking about the the fact that it's a community schools model and how do we define the community? So like in a D four, I have many, many communities. And so, you know, do you approach it from a feeder pattern state standpoint, which makes a lot of sense? But then also there in my area are a lot of students who don't stay in one feeder pattern because there's transience. And so I'm thinking about like in, you know, the D twenty three community, there's a lot of owned homes, historic residents. But and so there may be, don't know, don't have the data, and I don't claim to know Ms. Roberson's area, but maybe less of that. And so just wondering how this could be successful, giving the dynamics across the district.
It's a very interesting concept, Ms. Waters. Thank you. And and if we've got, it's set up three different way in each constituent areas. In District Four, for example, it's primarily the feeder and in North High School with a very limited scope. You've heard Mr. Dallas in District Three and then down or in District Twenty Three, it's the Burke Twenty, I'm sorry, thank you, the Burke feeder pattern and the elementary and Simmons Pinkney. So we're hoping that um, Dr. Guard and her principals request to wait until or they have um, map data to come and present to you because we want all the feeder patterns to present to you what they're doing. Um, but hopefully she comes, you'll see um, a a little different, a little dynamic setup. But I appreciate you bringing um, the concept up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dallas.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Dallas, uh, thank you for your time. So I I echo everything that my colleague said, uh, specifically to hone in phenomenally on, and that is the breakdown of barriers between uh, different institutions. Um, you've got the the uh, the community and the uh, school, the phrase you used that it just gave me, you said the school was the center of the community. I I love that. I absolutely love that. And and bringing those other institutions where the religious or like a Y M C, but getting all of that stuff into cohesive, uh, you're you're killing it, playing it. So so keep up the good work. Love that.
Dr. Bows?
I I have to agree with Ms. Waters because if you went to the one, the Lucy Beckham game on Friday, you would see their system working pretty well over there in a community that it seems to be, you know, very in line with some of the models and firm believer in making this, you know, unfortunately, we've got two big ones and so we've got a house divided over there.
It's a riot on Friday.
Uh, the one thing, and and I just seems like I hear enough of it, and that's the discussion on math. I mean, I know we have the bridges, you know, Graham. Can you explain the science of reading? That I I mean, this may have come up any occasions. I think it just went straight from my head. I I I know the bridge is the math component that works down in in the elementary school level. What's the science of reading?
I'm going to have our expert go a little bit idea.
It seems you you rely you rely very heavily on it, and it seems like
Yes.
it must be working.
Good evening. So the reading really is the way we do reading instruction. We've learned through the years after studying the brain and how the brain processes emotion exactly the way that we should be teaching our students to read, whether it's phonics or phonemic awareness, vocabulary processes. Those different very explicit minute pieces of instruction that we're doing to make sure that all of our children come to the table, prepared to read and learn on grade level.
What what was that word you used? Phonemic?
Phonemic awareness. Yeah, absolutely.
Google that.
We'll get it for you. It's really good. It's about being able to hear the sounds.
Ah, okay, thanks.
And so before you leave the podium. So this is a model that you used from all your feeder schools on up in this district?
Yeah, absolutely. And so um, the science of reading is really becoming more and more how we do business in the curriculum and instruction side of the house. Letters training, which you guys so proudly endorse earlier, speaks explicitly to the science of reading. It's based on those uh, five specific building blocks.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And as to the community resources, could you explain a little further exactly how the community has become involved and what you're seeing is working? Well, how are you getting these parents in?
We're we're in the beginning.
Are you doing?
Yeah, we're in the beginning stages and what parents uh, shared with us were, um, you know, here are some things that they wanted for their kids. They wanted them to be involved in in the arts, right? So we reached out to Charleston Stage. We have a partnership with Charleston Stage. We had one last year. Uh, and so Charleston Stage is able to offer every student in our building the opportunity to participate in after school drama clubs to become part of uh, participate in their summer camp. Every student in the building had the opportunity to go down to Dock Street this past year to see two performances. So we do that. They've got a program specifically at the high school that helps students who want to sort of like be behind the scenes. that helps students who want to sort of like be behind the scenes, understanding how to uh work the microphone, understanding sets of design and things like that. So all of the partners that we pulled in are are really based on some of the needs and supports and services of parents during our focus groups have said that they want, you know, us to consider and and to have readily available in our schools. So they've been very instrumental in in identifying that.
And and how many students do we have at Baptist Hill right now? It's approximately about six hundred. About six hundred. So the the three feeder schools are operating at about three to
We're we're at about three sixty-five. Then you've got Mini Hughes. I don't know the exact numbers, probably around two sixty, two seventy, and Jane Edwards around sixty, seventy students. So we're looking at uh over a thousand students. It will be impacting over a thousand students and their families.
And 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 darling, I'm just gonna throw this out. You can probably run at me at it. But you know, music is just such an important thing. And you know, it just seems like at least over on, you know, in the East Cooper side, the feeder schools use that. So it's so important to develop a music department at Baptist Hill to move it on because it just seems like, you know, that's one of those elements that you get them young and you get them moving forward and you've got the support at Baptist Hill. So it goes to my last question, which is sustainability. Because that's what Esser's all about. And we're at the last year of it. And it sounds like you've done some incredible things. What's your concern about that issue?
Yeah. And so in our work with all for SC um and and Mr. Young, uh, we are going to continue to engage with our partners for sustainability through uh funding, uh, asking, you know, seeking additional funding to be able to continue the work that that uh that we we started. And I I really believe that Mr. Young, with his connections and and the work that he's been doing for over thirty years in community and schools, will be able to support us uh in that work. And I think we've got a commitment for from South Carolina, University of South Carolina, to continue this beyond Esser.
Excellent work.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, can I ask a follow-up question?
If it's quick and not repetitive.
It's not. It's actually gonna build on what Mr. Grabowski was just talking with him about. Um, I have a background in music and the arts and um I know one thing that music theory and the use of music is excellent in helping um kids to grasp the concept of math. Um, it it in in considering the possibility that Esser is running out and is there a possibility that we can look for some sort of music grants or partnerships with um, you know, different institutions and things to bring a program that would help cultivate that. Um, and I and I see with these kids that come before us too. A lot of times they're really good in music, but they're failing in their core subjects. So.
Right. Well, oh, well, so so I think one avenue may be, uh, because we were able to start our partnership with Charleston Stage through Title Four Funding. Uh, thanks to John Cobb, who who had reached out to our school and, you know, asked us if we were interested in doing that. So that may be another funding source that we can use to build all kinds of arts programs throughout our schools. I'm excited too to report that Charleston Stage is gonna be working at the high school to build out an arts program there. And music is a big component uh of that piece. So I I I think that, you know, down the road, there're gonna be some opportunities for us to build those out, uh, you know, more than just the drama, but the 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 music and dance and all of that throughout uh our schools in D twenty-three.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to say um community schools doesn't have to be that expensive to implement. It's more about the model and the will. But I do, I do wanna challenge you all to really look at your data, your school data, and also the budgeting to show, you know, Esser was an opportunity to kickstart some things. But, you know, being able to present a budget that will show, you know, what you need to um to continue the process is gonna be really important as we get into the budget on process. So please really pay attention to that.
Thank you, Temple.
Thank you.
Thank you, Agina.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. McKinney, if we could just say really quickly, it's important to note that in the St. Paul's District in the last two years on SC Ready, there's been a rate of change improvement in students' reading scores of ninety-nine percent. So fourteen, I don't even think Mr. Dallas knows this. And I'm probably not supposed to say it says it's embargoed, but I will. Fourteen percentage point increase over two years, a percentage rate change of ninety-nine percent in the Hollywood area since the shift to the focus of the science of reading and the support that Mr. Dallas and his colleagues have put in place. And so, Mr. Dallas, we're looking forward to seeing great things. And Dr. Temple, we've got some systems in place to measure effectiveness of programs so that as Mr. Grabowski's asked us to do, we can assess effectiveness and thinking about how we budget. Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Dallas.
Thank you. Um, we're on to um item nine A. Is there a motion to approve the list of contracts greater than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars through June twenty twenty-three?
I assume.
Moved by Ms. Watley. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Temple. Discussion. We will um start with Mr. Grabowski.
I have nothing to add. I think the document's pretty clear of much.
Mr. Kelly. Ms. Waters. Ms. Bailey. Ms. Watley.
I have no.
Mr. Calhoun.
Um, good quick question, Ms. Barrowey. The work on Garrett, would that start while um immediately with the um students inside of there right now? With more inside of the roof work?
If you'll tell us which line item you're referring to.
Uh, that will be nine nine nine. Nine ma'am and Newton, um, that would be
Is it four?
Roof, yeah, is that
Number four.
Or um, the roof work on Garrett Academy?
Yes, sir.
So I will start immediately while the students are inside or more inside.
This is on the section of the building that the students are not in. It's it's district staff in the arc. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Calhoun? Like, Ms. Roberson?
Yeah, quick question. I think it goes to Mr. Barrowey. Uh, when Malden and Jenkins did their um audit report to us months ago, they talked about change orders. Can you, they're like six change orders um on this report. I think they're facilities. Can you talk, speak to that, the change orders?
Would you give us the numbers, the line item numbers that you're would like responses to?
Orders, um, there are change orders for number three, four, five, six, seven, and ten. And I just asked because it was a finding in the um audits and from Malden and Jenkins. And so I just wanted to know why so many.
Right there, each one, each one can represent a different reason on why we're doing change orders. I I've got Mr. Hamer on the line. Mr. Hamer, if you want to go through those line item by line item, because again, each one could be a different reason for a change order rather than a separate contract.
So the first. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So as you said, each one of them has a different reason why there was a change order. Um, if you look at line item number three, um, that was addressed to a uh an adjustment of scope. Uh, once we designed a project, we realized that we had to do more work than was it originally contracted, so that expanded. Um, the reason for the uh change order was for Garrett, for the roof portion there. Uh, we decided to break that project up. Uh, we had a very high cost for that project. We had an original contract uh that we executed back in June. And so this is for the second portion where we changed it so to to make sure that we had a comprehensive plan for the entire arc. Um, and again, the other two items there, I think you're uh referring to the Pinehurst HVAC as well as the um roof work at Pepper Hill. Uh, one of the change orders was a decision I made. We had an opportunity, if we could get more money to complete the entire roof rather than just a portion of it. That was really the case for Pinehurst. And again, the final one there, early college, that had to do with a a design that we had to increase. Uh, the city asked us to put more additional work into, uh, again, a stormwater plan that we had. And so that increased the project for the Hampstead Park. So uh again, each one of them had an individual, but um Mrs. Robson, most of them uh related to, once we got into the project, some additional scope and also correcting um some uh original designs that we had.
And item number ten is security. Okay, Michael? Change order to the Walden contract.
Related to the Walden contract, when we originally executed that agreement with Walden Security, uh, we did not have school security officers in place. So it was just a change order to incorporate that new program.
That satisfy your questions, Ms. Roberson?
Yeah, I I guess it does. Um, is the procurement new procurement director here?
No, ma'am.
Oh.
Soon.
Okay, so I guess my following question would be, it's a procurement, yeah, um, are these going to be findings on the procurement side?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. They they these won't be findings on the procurement side. Dr. Temple?
I'm I'm fine.
We will call for the vote then.
Madam, may I?
Oh, certainly.
Uh, Mr. Barrowey, line item three, and and I it it could be that it was a split, but but that is not over two hundred and fifty thousand. Is that intended to be on this report?
Yes, I can answer that. It is intended to be on the score, this report. Um, there was an original scope of work that was under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and this change order pushed it over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And due to our business rules that required me to come back and get this approval.
So the the amount listed is hundred twenty-seven thousand. Is it incorrect?
No, that's correct. That's the change order is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. The total amount of the project would be three hundred and twenty-seven.
That's the change amount. Understood. I, okay, that's the change amount.
Good question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we'll cast our vote. And please cast and confirm your vote. And the motion passes. Item B, um, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-eight capital program, phase five sales tax budget reallocation. Is there a motion to approve the reallocation of funds as shown on our attached resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Calhoun. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Grabowski. Questions? Um, Dr. Temple?
Um, I just wanted to clarify, if this goes on until December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight? So this project is scheduled to um in April of twenty twenty-four for completion. Oh, twenty twenty-four? Okay. Yes, ma'am. The twenty twenty-eight ending is the entire phase five program. Sales tax program. Yeah, okay. Sorry, I misunderstood your question.
Ms. Roberson? Mr. Calhoun? Ms. Watley? Ms. Bailey? Ms. Waters? Mr. Kelly?
Ma'am.
Mr. Grabowski? We're ready for the vote. And the motion passes. Next. Item nine C, um, the Malden and Jenkins procurement update. We received the update. Are there any questions for Ms. Carlin? Ms. Dr. Temple?
No.
Ms. Roberson?
I guess I have a statement. Is it? I don't believe that it's normal practice or best practice to have an auditor to do the audit and then do, then fix the problems.
Okay, I will look into that further. Um, we've had this happen before where an audit firm would come in and give us an a an audit and actually help us mitigate those risks moving forward. So I will, I will look into that and follow up with the board.
Yeah, Mr. Karowski, Mr. um Calhoun, that doesn't seem like a best practice.
And and we were presented with this without any knowledge that this was ongoing. This came to us once they issued their report.
Okay.
Thank you for looking into that, Ms. Carlin. Mr. Calhoun?
No.
Ms. Watley? Ms. Bailey? Ms. Waters? Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, uh, Ms. Jackie, I um somewhat off topic, but specific to you. Uh, a month ago, I made a statement that that was incorrect or it it the the wrong words came out of my mouth. I used the phrase accounting games or something like that. I need to um, I I wasn't meaning to imply that there was any kind of anything nefarious or anything like that happening. Uh, what I was trying to convey was something completely separate. So I apologize for that phrasing.
Well, thank you. Thank you so. I appreciate that.
Mr. Grabowski?
And this lifetime reading is the ninety-eight pages that resulted. This is the new policy we're trying to implement on procurement?
I I don't believe so.
No, sir.
That is our policy.
That is the district.
And I and and
Darn. I I I could have sworn she was gonna produce the whole ninety-eight pages.
I probably should have corrected the wording when when I had heard people using the word that that Malden and Jesus had created payroll policies. It 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 was a process, it was a procedures manual. They sat down, yes, sir. They sat down with all of the different employees and created standard operating procedures and desk procedures. And yes, sir.
I I
I have one very
I appreciate clearing up that because I was I was Nope, no further questions.
Just a very quick, the molding and Malden and Jenkins, that's the firm we normally use, not the one that did the audit on fifty-two thirty.
No, actually, they did. That was the firm that did the audit on fifty-two thirty.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Carlin. Um.
And 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 just so we're clear, what they did was they expanded their actions because we didn't have a director of procurement. So it was, you know, we did get that report, which was limited solely to one issue and
I was very impressed.
Unbeknownst to us, they went a step further, but then from if you talk to staff about what they did, it was greatly appreciated. But I I appreciate the clarification that it was just SOPs and really not policy questions that they were talking. They're just trying to clean up the SOP side of it. But I do agree with you. I don't, it's kind of odd to have one audit and then suddenly they expand it.
Exactly.
Thank you. Um. On to item nine E, Capital Projects Report um submitted.
Be
Oh, D, did I, oh, excuse me. Thank you. Uh, yes, D. Um, the agreed upon procedures report, the one cent sales tax capital program. Any questions for the report we received from Ms. Carlin? Dr. Temple?
Fine.
Ms. Roberson? Mr. Calhoun?
Oh.
Ms. Bailey?
As I look at Ms. Watley?
That's okay. I knew who you meant. No.
Ms. Bailey.
No.
Ms. Waters. Mr. Kelly. Mr. Grabowski, thank you. Thank you very much for a thorough report. Now, on to nine E, the Capital Projects Report. Um. From uh Ms. Costello, are there any questions? We'll start at the other side. Mr. Grabowski?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Kelly? Ms. Waters, Ms. Bailey? Ms. Watley, Mr. Calhoun?
Oh.
Ms. Roberson? Dr. Temple?
Um, I just want to clarify, now, how long is this one? There's got so many programs. How long is this one?
This sales tax program runs through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-eight. It's a six-year program.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Costello, for this. Um. Nine F, Charleston County School District Consolidated Procurement Code, Section seven ten exempt exemptions. Um. This was requested by Mr. Grabowski. Are there any questions for Ms. Carlin? We will start with Mr. Grabowski. This was lengthy.
And 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 as I understand it, in all the research and going back and talking to, you know, various districts, this all started back in two thousand And, 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 as I understand it, in all the research and going back and talking to, you know, various districts, this all started back in two thousand and eleven? In that time where these exemptions first came up?
Um.
Because it was with the new procurement code, statewide code.
Actually have, um, Robin McNeil, one of our procurement officers, on the, on Zoom. Robin, do you know exactly when these exemptions were, um, placed within our South Carolina procurement code, excuse me, our?
Hello, um, those exemptions, hello, everyone. Um, those exemptions has been part of our procurement code since, um, since I've been with the district in two thousand and eight. They, they follow each code as we've moved along.
Could you clarify? Came in, because when I look at the procurement code, these aren't listed in the state procurement. Not saying that the district doesn't have the power to request something and send it up to state for approval, but if you look at the state's limited, you know, exemptions, these exemptions are not in it.
No, sir, they are not, um, the state, they are not the stated exemptions. They're different. Um, each, our Charleston County School District approved these exemptions. Each school district has different exemptions per their procurement code. So ours is different than the state.
Right, and, and I just think it's very important. I think it's something that we have to look at, and it's gonna be coming down the road because. And one point five educational services. It looks like it's been applied to every Esser purchase out there, so there's been no competitive bidding. There's been really, you know, really very little oversight, but when you really look at it, the seven-ten, one point five educational services, to include but not limited contractual cooperative agreements for provision of services to students. I mean.
Yes, sir.
That sounds like education. Um, so I'm really concerned with a lot of these seven-tens. We've got one tonight. You know, here's one, here's a bid that, you know, went out to this company for seven hundred and four thousand dollars. It's got an exemption here, internal consulting. I mean, if I go back and look at all these vendors, seven-ten, seven, I mean, it's just.
Right.
It's, we really need to do, if there's ever a need for an audit, it's an audit on these special exemptions and Esser because.
The auditor will be looking at those things.
And, and I really, it, I think it behooves the, the board to really think about this, because this is within our powers to really look, obviously with Ms. Carlin, because there are some extensions that are, I mean, exceptions that are, are needed and make sense. But this seven-ten, I, I, I really struggled to find something that wouldn't follow under it. It's, I mean, it just seems like you could put everything under this exemption, not to let everybody out there in the world know that, but.
So we, we, Ms., Ms., um, Robin and I took a look at some purchase orders, um, just for fiscal year twenty-three that used the exemption. I didn't have enough time to categorize it by exemption, but I, I did want to share some interesting, some interesting data. So for, um, Esser two funds, just for FY twenty-three, we spent about six point two million dollars on, um, exemptions, which is about five percent of our overall budget. Um, on Esser three, just for FY twenty-three, on Esser three funding, we spent about nine point five million dollars, which is approximately eight percent of our overall, um, you know, expenditures, which is well over one point two billion dollars. And so I, I wanted to see that because of some things that, that were being repeated in board meetings about how we were continuously using these. When you look at the numbers this way, we're really, we're really not, but we, it will be something that will be addressed during the, the Esser audit.
And, and I, I agree with you. Most of the capital projects that I saw, you know, Mr. Rowey never used, you know, the exceptions. They seemed always to go to competitive bidding and everything. It just seems like it was all the small ones, the fifty thou, you know, anything slightly over fifty thousand and below two hundred and fifty thousand. It just seemed that little gray areas where, you know, a lot of them.
And one thing I didn't, one thing I didn't, um, say that I need to say is whenever we were looking at these expenditures, it was across, it was across everything. It wasn't over two fifty. It was everything, all of the POs. So, thank you.
Your county's great. I mean, whenever I ask you for something, you give it to me, so.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not worried about that. It's just, it seems like this exemption's one of those, you know, ones, and with Esser going away, and us going back and trying to figure out, you know, some way to, you know, get all of the budget and all the expenses over fifty thousand, you know, recorded, you know, you know, it's gonna be something that we'll have to discuss as a board, so that we all know upfront, and maybe we can get rid of this, you know, there's a lot of this secondary meetings and coming back, because we agreed upon it, discussed, knew about it, you know, prior to approving the budget. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes, uh, uh, Ms. Jackie, specifically, uh. It's, I'm looking at seven-ten, one-five, and it's A and B that both seem really broad. Um, can you give me an example? Uh, actually, B, I understand, but can you give me an example of something that might fall under subsection A?
You're talking about educational services? Seven-ten?
Yeah, 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 point A there, sub bullet A.
Right, and so there are, there are certain cooperative agreements that we can go into with other districts. Um, I can't think of a vendor right off the top of my head. I, I might have to ask Robin if she's familiar with one, um, but there, that's what we would use that, that, um, exemption for. Did that?
Co- cooperative agreements?
Yes, he's asking for line item, the difference between line item A and B, under educational services.
It just seems excessively broad from trying to understand what would fall under that.
Um, when we do, well, competitively, competitively, we, um, we're able to piggyback and use each other governmental, uh, cooperative agreements. Uh, whether it be another school district, whether it be another governmental entity, but, um, one that we use, that you may see, is Omnia Partners. Um. They do a lot of educational products that we piggyback off of. Uh, we sometimes piggyback off of Berkeley County, Dorchester County, uh, or the state. Those are all considered cooperative agreements.
Okay, so we're sharing the cost with these other governments for a vendor?
The co, the contract.
Yeah. Not the cost, just the contract.
Just the contracts.
Okay.
Think if we provided a few examples, it would.
Yeah, I'm not a very intelligent person. That'd be very helpful. No, I, yeah, okay.
But we can, we can certainly do that.
I, thank you.
Okay.
Helped my brain a little bit. Nothing further, ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. Waters?
Ms. Carlin, isn't this, the virtual academy, um, an example of that?
With the Low Country Education Consortium, I do believe you were right.
Just trying to give an example right.
Need is naughty. Yes, yes, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Bailey?
Of course.
Ms. Watley? Mr. Calhoun?
Um, yes, Ms. Carlin, can you send us that breakdown of the percentages that you have within our board report?
What I went over earlier?
Yeah, about the five percent, eight percent. I think that'd be very helpful for us when we.
Sure.
Were talking about this.
Sure, so I looked at our overall, um, uh, uh, budgetary spend for FY twenty-three, which is one point two billion. That's across all of our funds. Um, when I looked at the, the federal funding piece of what we spent using these exemptions on all federal funds, it was approximately twenty-one, or excuse me, twenty-two million dollars, which was about two percent of our spend. But I took it a step further and wanted to look at, um, Esser two and three. The reason I didn't look at CARES Act or Esser one is because we didn't have. An FY twenty-three. So I looked at Esser two, um, and we spent approximately six point two million dollars, which is about five percent of our spend. And then for Esser three, um, we spent approximately nine point five million dollars, which is about eight percent of our total spend.
Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Roberson? Dr. Temple?
Well, I think on, on these exemptions, we need to realize that when we're working with educational practices, some of the things are unique. And it's not something that you can put out and find ten companies that are doing the particular program or services. So that's where it falls into line, that these are exemptions, because in many cases, there's only one group that is doing that kind of, um, service, so it becomes unique. Um.
That's a valid point. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
One, one follow-up?
Certainly.
Ms. Jackie, would you be willing to give us similar number, maybe in a board brief or something next week, um, similar numbers that go back further than twenty-three?
Mm-hmm.
To the, to maybe the start of Esser or.
Sure.
Something thereafter. I'd appreciate that. Just a similar breakdown. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Then we will move on to, um. The, uh, item G, uh, the bond ratings. Are there any questions for Ms. Carlin from this report with the, um, Moody's? Mr. Grabowski?
Ms. Carlin, you want to brag on this?
She, she should, yes. Let's get this on the record.
Please do on the record.
So, um, these were very good, um, rating agency reports from Moody's as well as S and P Global. Um, I'm happy to report that we maintain our district AA two issuer, issuer rating with Moody's, um, as well as our AA two rating with our long-term, uh, general obligations tax bonds. Um, and then we maintained our AA three rating on our outstanding installment purchase revenue bonds, as well as our MiG one rating. So overall, what that tells us that we're doing a really great job with our finances. We are good financial stewards. We are maintaining a high fund balance, and not only are we, um, staying within budget, a lot of times we're staying below budget, and so that, that's the result of this. Um, as far as.
Where's the media when we need them?
I know.
Keep going.
Um.
Do our press release.
And, and the same thing with S and P Global rating. They just great, rate things a little differently, and we just wanted to break that down to, to show that to you as well, but it was basically the same message, is that whatever you're doing, keep doing, it's a good job, and, um, we maintain our ratings for this large refunding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski, for having her say that out loud, even though we've all read it. Uh, Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, um, again, for the, um, juveniles in the room, um, is AA two, or, yeah, I'm talking about myself, AA two or AA three, which one is a better rating?
It actually starts from the top. It goes from AA three down to AA two, to AA one. So you want to stay.
Okay.
But, you know, AA one's not bad, but you want to stay, you know, an AA two rating or higher.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Waters? Ms. Bailey?
Keep up the good work.
Ms. Watley? Mr. Calhoun?
Um. Just really quickly, can you talk about how our credit rating will, I think this might go, bounce to both sides, uh, can we talk about how the credit rating will affect our accreditation, and then how the accreditation affects our credit store as well?
I, I'm not prepared to talk about that, but I, I can certainly follow up with the board in an, in a board update.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. Ms. Roberson? Dr. Temple?
Thank you.
Exactly.
May I ask a question? Uh, actually, to Mr. Calhoun, when you talk accreditation, you, you, you're talking about our edu, are, are those two tied together somehow?
Financially, yeah. We said we go bad, if, say, if our credit rating dips fairly hard, and, you know, our, the folk who're doing, looking at our accreditation saying we can't handle our financial aspect, then we'll go, we'll be in danger of accreditation. So that goes along with like the board doing the trainers and everything. We don't do something on our end, and that'll affect our accreditation. If we, if the, the academic side dips down, all of that affects it, but the financial is a really key part, so us keeping this up on the financial end, that helps us on that end as well, but, yeah.
Thank you.
I was kind of wondering, actually, I was kind of wondering the same thing, is, if this would, like, help, not just, but I'll look forward to your.
Yeah, we'll come up, we'll.
Thank you.
We'll discuss that, um, when we talk about the accreditation. Um, H, the multi-year financial update, um, it stated that district staff would like to present something.
So I actually have hard copies if you need them. I know this is a lot of data to look on one sheet. So, yeah, thanks, Bill. Does anybody need the hard copy? I thought so. Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Trudy. So we, um, we put together a multi-year revenue going out to, um, fiscal year twenty-six as soon as the FY twenty-four budget was passed. Um, I'll just kind of give a breakdown of what this, what this schedule looks like. I, I know it can be a little overwhelming if, if you, um, are not familiar with looking at, you know, um, numbers a lot. So the first four columns are our actual, um, revenues and expenditures, which are our audited revenues and expenditures for fiscal year nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. The reason why we list this out is so it kind of gives you a, a baseline or a historical, not a baseline, but a historical view of how our revenues and expenditures have, have, you know, run over the course of the years. And this also helps us, um, historically look back at like a four-year, um, average, and it helps us budget moving forward as well. Um, the next three columns, which are in blue, is our average, um, of all four fiscal years together. And then the next column over is what is our FY twenty-three budget, which we, you know, just finished up that fiscal year. We're still, the yellow column is still the projections through June thirtieth. Um, those still need to be updated. General ledger is still moving somewhat, you know, with payroll accruals and last-minute payments that are coming in. Um, so as soon as we know what that, what those final numbers are, we will, we will update this, but at this point, um, as, as of the end of May, um, when you look at the projected year-end total at the very bottom, we were projecting to bring in revenues, um, of seven point three million dollars over, over expenditures. And then the next column is just the variance of, of the FY twenty-three budget to projected year-end, and it's broken down by revenues and, of course, expenses. And then moving over, um, the FY twenty-four budget, these numbers were pulled straight out of our, um, FY twenty-four budget, or excuse me, second reading that was passed, um, back in July. And then this gives us our, our, basically our baseline to start projecting for FY twenty-five and twenty-six based upon what we know now. Um, you'll notice that some of the, um, revenues that we've indicated are, are completely based on what we know now, meaning there's a lot that could change, even though in our local revenues, we are projecting, um, a slight mileage increase. We're, we're not, we're not promising that to anyone. We're not saying that. We're just based that, basing that on what we've done historically. So we've used a three point three mileage increase for FY twenty-five and twenty-six. Um, with the state sources, you know, it's, it's a little bit difficult for us right now to project what the state's gonna do. Um, so we, we, we were very conservative, and I, we projected, uh, I haven't looked at this in a while, excuse me, uh, three point eight, seven point two percent increase. Um, instead of the typical, um, if you look, if you compare fiscal year twenty-four to projected year-end twenty-five, it looks like we got close to a eight point eight, excuse me, eight point six percent increase. We did not feel comfortable, um, budgeting FY twenty-five and twenty-six at that, at that type of increase. So those, that's the kind of things that we look at. Um, and then on the expenditures, uh, these are just purely hypotheticals for FY twenty-five and twenty-six. We are in no way, uh, supporting anything here. We're just trying to do a norm of what we've typically done in the past. So we're looking at FY, um, teacher sal, excuse me, FY twenty-five teacher salaries with a, uh, a step in a two percent COLA. We're not saying that's what we're doing. We're just trying to get something on paper to show y'all what we're, what we're, what we're projecting, you know, projecting to budget. If it goes higher than that, the cost of living adjustment, then of course that number goes up. Uh, same with the non-salary amounts, you know, in the purchase services, supplies, capital outlay. Um, it's just very early projections that we wanted to get in front of Audit and Finance Committee as well as the board, um, because we're gonna start talking about the FY twenty-five budget very soon. Any questions?
We'll start with Mr. Grabowski. Or I'll start with Dr. Temple.
Okay.
It's fine. Um. Ms. Carlin, I appreciate having this. Kind of wish we'd had it before we passed the budget, but, you know, we'll get there this year. Um, and I think that what this shows is why it's so important that we start talking to the various divisions immediately, um, and getting what they're proposed, anything over fifty thousand disclosed, so we can really look at this. Because really, when you look at the negative side of this, you know, going down, it's really only, what, one percent? Yeah, but that's, that's tight. That's a real close, you know, area, and we still have the capital, I mean, the, um, use of balance funds that, you know, we aren't pushing out forward of using, which we are covering in this other budget. I mean, in our current budget is, you know, potential, although we've not used it. But I, I, I do think the numbers do show, you know, why it is so important to get the expense and start talking about this budget, especially taking in the fact that we should be looking probably in January of, you know, moving a lot of these Esser positions and to, you know, start assuming them now. Um, and most of the schools, I'm, I've, I've felt very. And most of the schools, I'm I felt very good, at least, you know, in my district, that, you know, the reliance on S or funds is not that heavily. But I know we've only put aside not that much money for sustainability. And that sustainability, as I understand it, has to be, you know, spread out over a couple of years. It's not like we're going to have this amount of money in the budget that can be used. So when you look at that budget, you see that number, don't think that that's something that we can just step in and use. So that's why I think this discussion is just so important to get going. And I can't wait to see Mr. Calhoun's revision to the Audit and Finance Charter so that we can create some type of model that, you know, really helps with this process. But thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Questions?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Jackie, I got a couple for you. First, what belongs in capital outlay?
Capital outlay. Those are purchases over five thousand dollars, like one unit item that costs over five thousand dollars. This could include equipment, vehicles, you know, things like that.
Okay. And why the massive jump? We went from three hundred, five hundred, six hundred to one and a half million or one point four.
I do not have my monthly update with me and I I will have to follow up with you on that. My apologies.
No worries.
There were some significant purchases where things were moved around to to buy purchases. And I believe most of it was vehicles, but I'll need to look further into that and follow up.
Mr. Barroway's new Porsche, is that what that was? Disregard. The the other piece. The other piece is I I see a pretty standard growth trend, right, that nine percent, ten percent? And then looking at twenty-five and twenty-six, it drops to two and a half or three. What led to the projection of that that minimal of a growth? Year-over-year.
Which, are you looking at revenues?
I'm looking at the bottom line expenditures. So you're anticipating our expenditures going up ten percent one year, up ten percent, and then the third year only going up two.
So if you look at salaries and benefits, you'll notice that the largest increase that we had between twenty-three and the twenty-four budget was due to salaries and benefits. And I'm I'm sure that has a lot to do with the, not only the the teacher salary increase, but taking those, the teacher's always scheduled out to forty and then looking at non-teacher, yeah, non-teacher salaries at a two and a half percent cost of living and taking those steps out to thirty-one.
And does that stop in year twenty-five?
No, we're we're ma-, we're showing that we can maintain it. But but in our projections, we're looking at a two and a half percent cost of living address adjustment across the board. We're not saying that's what we're doing. It was just our our projection based on historically on what we've done in the past and how we've budgeted this stuff in the past.
I see. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I I think that you you used a very good word there. What we're really looking at is what, from what our actions were in July. This is just to maintain those current actions. That's without any increase of expenditures or changes in the org chart or anything. This is just to maintain what the budget we passed.
Well, maintain plus projected increase to 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 continue to raise teacher salaries up and as well as-
Steps and everything else.
Yes.
Thank you, Karen.
Ms. Waters?
I just have two questions. One, has this been compared with enrollment projections out that far?
No, no, it hasn't.
Okay. And then the second question I have is, we have, we were talking about fund balance and some of the, you know, danger in having a fund balance at a certain amount. And I think you had said we weren't there at all. I'm just thinking about if we were to capture these savings year-over-year in anticipation of a, realizing these are very conservative revenue projections, but in advance of a potential deficit. If fund balance is something that if we're able to continue to take advantage of.
Yes, that is, if that is what the board's direction is, is taking from the edge of the excess fund balance to do things, we would, we would, you know, definitely take that in consideration in our different budget scenarios.
And I'm just thinking about the enrollment projections, just, you know, what they might be if they're anticipated to go up or or not. And given the greater people moving into Charleston, they very well could. And what does that do to our expenditures and this number potentially growing?
Right, right.
Ms. Bailey?
Under projected expenditures, can you explain total reserves and other?
Yes, so total reserves, whenever we specifically put money aside to cover something, like for example, if you look over in the FY twenty-three budget column, you'll see the two million dollars. That was to help us with any seven-day enrollment changes. And so we do, we do plan for those enrollment changes, especially if we see where we could possibly go up in enrollment, which is always a good thing. Not only will our state revenues increase, but also our expenditures will increase as well. And so we always put a line item there just to help cover that within our current budget.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Bailey? Ms. Watley?
I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. On projected FY twenty-five and twenty-six, the numbers in red. Are they in red because they're, I'm looking at total projected revenues and excessive expenditures? Is that meaning that that's a positive?
Exceed revenues. Anytime you see red on one of these sheets.
That's what I was thinking. I was like, this sounds like a contradiction. And now I I got lost in that and I lost my place. You can go on. Yeah, I lost my place.
Mr. Calhoun. Ms. Roberson?
I just want to ask again, I asked last month and I'll just continue to ask. I really would like to have a detailed breakout of the budget. Since this passed, you have to have some type of basis to put this, the budget together. So can I see the detailed breakout of the budget?
Are you saying by department and school?
Absolutely.
We can provide that. We can provide it again.
We can provide that.
Dr. Temple?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Carlin.
Thank you.
We are on to item I, the S or update. We received this report. Are there questions? And we'll start with Dr. Temple. Well, I'd just like to know what's the status of the teacher bonus. Do we want to ask Dr. Gallion because he said he was the point person or is it a combination answer or?
Well-
Actually, I have three questions, but anyway, that's the first one.
We continue to work on it. You got some work to do. So.
How, I'll I'll agree with Dr. Temple. How far are we along with finding the nineteen?
When we, when we think we are moving in the right direction, we find out something else and we have to go back to the drawing board. So that's one of the things that I wanted to talk to the board chair and Audit and Finance about.
And and then looking at the budget is like, what what is being done this year for learning loss?
Thank you, Dr. Temple. We are continuing to focus on high doses tutoring in our schools across the system. We're also focusing on that instructional framework that Michelle spoke about a little earlier, which are the the common elements of good teaching, as she indicated. We're also working to strengthen our PLCs and our MTSS systems of support. That PLCs are our professional learning communities and our MTSS are our multi-tier systems of support. So we're really shoring up those MTSS systems to ensure that we see students early on when they're struggling and that we provide support services that they need in order to be successful. And we're also focusing on math as we were able to meet with some of you today to review some embargoed results. As Michelle indicated, we're focusing on our math, particularly in our elementary school and getting students ready for that gateway course of Algebra One in the middle school. And we're continuing to focus on the science of reading, as Mr. Dallas talked about earlier, ensuring that viable curriculum. So between the high doses tutoring we have, one, the professional development for teachers around professional learning communities, making sure our MTSS systems are in place for targeting students. And then again, our viable curriculum in both reading and math, we're hoping will help combat the learning loss of students.
Okay. And then the other thing in the update was was looking at the summer program. Did we use all of that money for the summer program or is something left over? And then our after-school learning programs are concerned?
For the last three consecutive summers, we were able to use S or funds to provide a rather robust summer learning outfit. For the first time, providing middle schoolers with a summer solution. Typically, we concentrate our efforts at the elementary grades in terms of remediation and accelerating the growth in terms of closing those gaps that exist. And so in an effort to shore up the teacher bonuses, there is a few million dollars that would otherwise go towards summer learning that we are having to take a hard look at in terms of what can we provide next year? What's viable? What's a good solution for our summer enrichment, summer acceleration? Whereas the truth is, in order to shore up the bonuses as directed, some things have to be cut. And so the the truth of it is, the money that would be typically set aside for summer enrichment next summer is now being held as a viable option for teacher bonuses.
And that's approximately five million dollars.
Yeah, I wasn't going to say it, but yes, five million dollars.
Towards the the big nineteen for next year's summer school.
Ms. Roberson?
Okay, I'm going to take a stab at this. When we approved the millage rate, that covered all salaries, correct? So the salaries that were already allocated in S or isn't that free now because we covered the salaries in with the millage?
No, ma'am. So the budget that we, that was passed by the board back in July, that was for general operating fund only. That had that, those those salaries that were captured in general operating fund with state revenues and the millage rate increase that was approved, local tax revenues, that only covers general operating fund. That doesn't cover teacher increases across all the other, all the other different funds and federal funds and and S or funds.
So do we know, like, when we look at the S or three?
Can I kind of let Ms. Roberson finish and then we'll come back to you? I I think you asked one question and she answered a different one. So if you'll, Ms. Roberson, if you'll reword your question maybe.
Salaries, you had positions in S or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then we had, we approve a budget with all the positions being covered in the GOF.
Yes, ma'am.
So where's the money that was for those positions in S or?
That's my question.
They stayed with S.
So isn't that money free to now be used for the bonus?
So can I back up just a minute? Let me make sure I understand you. Are you asking if the GOF money is covering any of these S or funded positions? Okay, I'm sorry. I am not understanding the question. I apologize.
Would you mind if I reword that for you? So what I, what I understand this, Ms. Roberson to be saying is, is there's money set aside for positions in in the S or bucket?
Yes.
Where is that money that is now no longer needed out of the S or bucket because it's funded in GOF?
I wouldn't say that that funding that was set aside in S or three percent for positions is no longer needed. Maybe that's where the confusion is coming into play.
Is that what you're asking?
That's what I was asking.
I think the question we're asking is, in the S or three funding, what amount is in teacher positions or salaries? I think that's what we're asking. Cause we see these, you know, allocation overall learning loss and so on. But what is the, how much money is there that is dedicated towards salaries?
Yes, ma'am. I do not have that info. I don't have that layout with me. You're asking for a breakdown. I believe you're asking for a breakdown by object. And I don't have that with me to tell you salaries and benefits and what's encumbered and what's left to be paid.
That's it.
Okay, I will follow up.
Is that indeed your question, Ms. Roberson?
What Mr. Kelly said was my question. So I guess I'll wait for Dr. Gallion to meet with Audit and Finance and the board chair. But I will ask that that information that comes out of that meeting is shared with everyone on the board.
Yes. Mr. Calhoun?
I have just a really quick question for Mr. Barroway with the improvement indoor air quality. And you know, we have a big surge that's going on inside of Charleston right now. So just looking at the indoor air quality and how we are keeping our schools clean and sanitized as we go.
So the the money that's remaining in air quality is to complete projects for replacement of HVAC roofing. And that money is lined up to be allocated. I believe there's only two and a half million remaining
Right.
for the twenty million that was allocated. As far as the operations of the school, we're continuing to operate the school for longer hours, meaning more airflow coming in and out. That's that's being, that's being paid for through the budget. So the bottom line is there is no additional S or funding required for the, for operations at this point. Everything is covered.
Thank you.
Ms. Watley?
So I'm going to go back to the teacher bonuses. Is this, I'm very frustrated about. We had a motion that carried on the floor to prioritize the use of S or three funding for the teacher bonuses months ago. And after that motion was approved, then we had an S or presentation come up that one particular line item was very extravagant. It was over one point two million dollars. And then another meeting, we had S or three come up again where we had two line items that we, and and all of these were for vendors outside of our district. And those two line items alone were over six million dollars. So we're talking almost seven point five million dollars right there, just on three line items out of the S or three funding. And I, the last thing that I said at that last meeting was I do not want this to be used like a carrot being dangled in front of these people's faces with the promise of a bonus. Oh, no, we'll get it. We'll find it. And here we are, months later, we still haven't find it, found it. Whereas, you know, if we had just gone ahead and paused those vendors and prioritized the teacher bonuses like we had moved to do, we wouldn't be sitting here asking you yet again, where's the bonuses? And that's what I wanted to use my time to say.
Okay. Go ahead, Dr. Gallion.
So, Ms. Watley, I think what you said is accurate. But I want to say this, that I wasn't here when that motion was taken. And I do think that there should have been the actual securing of that money before we made the promise. And so what, as hard as we're working, what I want to share with the chair and the Audit and Finance Committee is how it's playing out in real time and the reality of it. That's not to say that we won't continue to work, but there's some decisions that the board may have to make in the moving forward.
I think the board, well, Mr. Grabowski and I look forward to that meeting. We'll set it up. And I think the board is willing to help the district, or I'll speak for myself. I'm willing to help the district make tough decisions and let some of the buck stops here to live up to the bonus. It shouldn't all fall on the district. The board will support the district's hard decisions. My, I will. And it was a unanimous vote, Dr. Gallion. So. Ms. Bailey?
Yes, I have two questions.
Yes, I have two questions. Um, Mr. Calhoun touched on one of them. I was looking at the, um, ESER report and it was talking about improved, improved indoor air quality. Has all of our schools across the district, has the HVAC systems in each one of these schools? Especially the older model schools?
No, ma'am, they haven't. I was dedicated twenty one million dollars for this project. By no means could I do every school. I identified the highest priorities and those are the projects that we picked for the twenty one point one million that was identified. And I can certainly provide a list of those schools. We do have other sources of funding to replace systems, fixed cost of ownership, capital maintenance, sales tax, and we allocate projects toward that as well. So, I, I think the twenty one million was highly effective to replace the systems that were the most needed. But the more of the focus was on learning, and I, I didn't want to ask for additional funds when we had funding needs on the learning services side.
I just asked that question because I've had emails from parents talking about, um, COVID. And wanted to make sure that the district was improving the air qualities in the school because we are in the schools for longer periods of time. And also, I wanted to ask about, um, the developing and implementing of public health policy. What does, what does that all entail?
So, so a big portion of those funds were used for, and are being used for safe packaging for our food products in the cafeterias. That was where that was dedicated to. And, and in the current plan, to find the money for the, um, teacher bonuses, some of that money is being offered as for teacher bonuses. What'll happen is that cost will be incurred by nutrition services, which of course is a standalone program. It'll have to be funded, but we'll have to take it in another, in another manner if we're to give that money back for the teacher bonuses. But again, we try to look at it objectively, come up with the, the best case contribution back to that teacher bonus. And it looks like, I mean, at least right now, we're proposing, uh, to return, I want to say five hundred thousand dollars of the, of the funds that were dedicated to that. But again, as Dr. Gallion mentioned, we're still doing all the puts and takes on, on finding that, that money. And that's part of it.
Thank you.
Ms. Waters?
Um, just a comment that, um, I want to make sure that we don't, um, hit one very deserving group against another extraordinarily deserving group. Um, and when we think about, um, programming that benefits students, that, that is a priority. Uh, regardless of what vote we've taken, we've got to do the hard work of finding money and we've got to be, uh, earnest as we come to the conversation about, uh, what, what reasonably can go away versus, um, just scrapping things because there's a big number associated with it. But what we really need to do, because the intent of the ESER funding was to support students' learning loss and to ensure that we didn't exacerbate the gap, which did happen. Um, and so, just as a philosophy, I think it's important for the Board to approach its work, understanding that this is a student-first endeavor. Um, and at the same time, we have to do something for the kids, I mean, excuse me, for the teachers. Um, and we voted on it and I fully support and stand by the fact that we need to do something for teachers. But we can't get one struggle against another. This is not the struggle Olympics.
Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. Um, I, a few quick questions, uh, specific to ESER three, and I suppose perhaps to Ms. Jackie. Um, there's two line items, um, that seem to be the same thing, uh, learning loss and overall learning loss. LL and eleven. Can, can you tell me why they're, what's the difference?
I would need to defer to Anita and/or Michelle.
So, typically, Mr. Kelly, when, um, a chief or executive level person enters this information, my language may be slightly different from the next person. So, that's just a matter of semantics in terms of who entered that item. Um, it's not the same person entering the information. And so, just slightly variation in the terminology. Same, same concept, same umbrella, same infrastructure in terms of learning loss.
So, when reading line item LL and line item eleven, just I should add them together? I mean, in my head, like, so we're not actually talking about forty one, we're talking about fifty two and a half million?
Well, eleven, eleven is summer learning and after school. That's what Dr. Temple asked about a little while ago. So, it so falls under learning loss.
So, on mine, it's eleven says learning loss. Ten is summer and after. Do I have a different version than you guys do perhaps?
Maybe. What I'm looking at on, um, this tug-in screen is slightly different than what you.
You have a twelve that says learning loss, maybe? It should be eleven and a half million?
Yes. Twelve is addressing learning loss, yes.
Okay. So, that, so then what you're seeing is number twelve and LL. Those should just be combined in my, like, when I'm adding them up. Is that, is that correct?
That's not the, there's no twelve.
So, these categories were created by the State Department of Education. This, this is how we built our plan. Maybe that's, that's the answer. So, in ESER two, we've got twelve for addressing learning loss, but we don't have twelve in ESER three as a category.
So, man, okay. So, the, the version in, in Board Docs, it's dated six thirty? Uh, July, uh, June thirty, okay. I've got line item eleven says learning loss. And I've got line item LL, overall learning loss. What I'm trying to figure out is if the LL is a roll-up or if it, if those two are actually the same category?
And the best way to answer that question is, once again, let me follow up with the Board. Let me look at the State Department of Education, how they categorize it and share that with Michelle and, and Anita and then follow up with the Board.
Very well. Okay. Yeah, I'd appreciate that. Uh, the, the second question, um, last time we were together, pardon me, uh, I believe if memory serves that you said you'd found about six million dollars for the teacher bonuses. And then, uh, Dr. Gallion just said that we had to found something, one step forward to suspect it. So, has that six million dollars, we're, we're no longer, are, are we less than that? Or how close are we to that nineteen that we need?
We're around the same amount. We just got some decisions to make.
Okay, so. And, and I'm not, I'm not putting words in your mouth here. Would it, it, has there been no progress then in the last month toward this goal?
No, there's been a lot of progress, but the reality of it, when you really flush it out, now you, you, you're crossing the line potentially affecting schools. So, now, we had a crossroad right now. We need, I need to talk to the Board Chair and Audit about this.
Thing of the most respectful way to say.
Ms. Waters, Ms. Waters' point, we're at a point where we're almost gonna be pitting one thing against the other.
Okay. So, I mean, this is absolutely respectful, sir. So, please do hear it in that tone. Um, the Board Chair has no authority to change a unanimous decision of the Board. So, if there's something, some decision that needs to be made, I would encourage you to discuss that with the Board as a whole in a public forum, because we made a public vote.
Right. And we will.
He said, yeah, okay.
So, the intent is not to, to avoid the public.
I will promise you, Mr. Kelly, I will not make a board decision, but I will listen to.
Certainly.
Yeah, the intent is not to avoid the public conversation, is to, as a courtesy to the Chair and Audit and Finance to give them a heads up of what we may potentially have to discuss.
Okay. Leave that there then. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Grabowski, last but not least?
Yeah, because I, I do have the state application and it doesn't make any sense when it, when you come to break down and look at this chart on, on learning loss. And one says, you know, forty million dollars cumulative, and then there's another one that says two hundred and fifty, I mean, million. So, it, I think the problem with this form that we've gone, it, and it just really kind of like jumps out at me. Cause we have FY twenty-three encumbered, which is last year, but we have no discussion as to what has been encumbered on this remaining eighty-two million. And I think that is the challenge going ahead, is thinking that we're gonna spend eighty-two million dollars this year on ESER funds. And what the heck are we gonna do next year to supply after-school programs? And I mean, I understand, you know, we've got capital reserves for air quality and, you know, and their, or capital funding. But, you know, the learning loss, the after-school, the summer programs that we have been relying on, and then the learning loss, you know, uh, I mean, it's, this is still ongoing. And we're relying so heavily on ESER. And that's why I think, Dr. Gallion, I really think we need to revise this format to add in what is encumbered right now. What have we done? Um, before you come to Audit and Finance, but at the same time, it's got to be itemized. And we have to start looking at each department to see exactly what they're relying on this eighty-two million dollars. Because they need to know immediately that, you know, next year is a new year and this does not exist. So, this is a large amount of money to be encumbered into, you know, twenty twenty-four. But I, I, I think it would, in looking at it and, and looking at the federal guidelines and everything, and, you know, the aggregate data versus the, you know, this aggregated data. And then looking at what is the impact of any of these programs on the various aspects of education. I mean, that's written throughout all of the reporting guidelines. And I have yet to see anything from the district showing that we have any data showing the impact. I, you know, I've asked for the quarterly reports to see what we're reporting to the quarterly, you know, and reporting to the state as to the impact. Cause we're in our third year, there's got to be some impact being reported. And I don't think the Board's been shown any of that.
Well, one big impact will be the state embargo data. That'll be one data point. And I know that the team has worked on a plan for how they vet whether or not the programs were successful.
Well, that's definitely gonna be incredibly, incredibly important as we start taking the departments apart and saying, give me what you're gonna be spending next year. So, I know right now, before we go into the budget season, what I can start looking, because you need to come down into reality and seeing that these ESER positions just aren't there or these programs aren't there. But we really need to know this impact data. And I know you, somebody's had to be doing something over these last three years. I mean, we've spent an awful lot on salaries on ESER-funded personnel. I just have not seen anything but what Ms. Carlin produces.
You know, Mr. Grabowski, um, you may recall when we met to talk about ESER a, a month or so ago, we provided some impact reports and samples, um, and we went over with John Cobb, I think he's here, and Ms. Roberts is in here, that sample impact report. And I think we looked at a couple of different programs that day. Those are this type of impact reports we're doing with the big line items. And then we, I believe, talked about what criteria we're using to identify which programs that we're running those impact reports on. So, Buffy and John and their teams are working to collaborate now on doing just that, on those impact reports.
But if I took and asked you for a simple cost per student, cost per student of what we're paying using ESER funds at one school versus all the schools, and then you're gonna show me what the impact is of the state scores coming up. But that should have been done last year, should have been done the year before. And you're showing me percentages in an aggregate form. I don't want to see that. I want to see all the schools broken down, cost per student and see what we're doing. Cause that's where I'm gonna see the impact. Not taking into account some of the test scores from other schools and that may be lifting up the percentages that you've been showing me as to impact.
I appreciate that. I, I, I appreciate your point on that. And it's well taken. What, what we will be able to do when the embargo data comes out is show you school by school. Um, but it's important that the Board knows and that we don't try to, um, pinpoint any one piece of, um, programmatic, um, implementation or position to the overall success of any one group of students. So, what we'll do is, we'll, we'll show you a breakdown by school of student growth and student achievement. And then we'll look at and show you how they've spent their ESER, their ESER funding. But systemically, what we're looking at are the big ticket items, how we've used ESER funding in regards to professional development, how we've used it in regards to instructional materials and how those things have made an impact on the population. Again, we can look at the school level data for you if you prefer. But again, a majority of our big ticket items, millions of dollars have gone toward, for example, professional development for teachers in the science of reading. Those, those type of things, high dosage tutoring. So, we look at that compared to Algebra I results, for example. So, we're happy to bring that back to you. Here are some examples of those reports with you. And I think maybe we can talk offline about the best way to do that and how we might share that with the Board at large versus just the Audit Finance Committee.
Madam Chair, I need to offer a point of clarity. Um, it seems the, the, the statement that I made has been misconstrued. Um, I was not coming from the position of an us versus them mentality. That is toxic. I was coming from the position, and what I was emphasizing is prioritizing. Um, we had a motion on the floor that was unanimously approved, and I think every single one of us are passionate about getting it done. Um, so, when, when you make that a priority, um, you're gonna lead with that. And, and it's not to say that you're gonna neglect the other things that also need to be done. But my grandmother's from the country, so I'm gonna borrow a saying. She always used to say, there's more than one way to skin a cat. And, and I don't mean to offend the PETA people out there. But, um, you know, it, it's not to say that you don't do the other things. But, but you, you put those on pause and make the priority the thing that you promised and don't use it in the, in, maybe, I'm not saying that it's even the intention to have used that as a carrot to dangle, but you gotta make good on that promise. So, perhaps the other items that are so expensive, perhaps then you shop for another vendor that isn't as expensive, or you approach it a different way, but you can still get it done. That, that, it was not coming from the position of an us versus them mentality at all.
I didn't take it as that.
Okay. Well, I, I needed to clarify that.
I didn't take it.
Because I was definitely, well, you know, that, that was then followed up on as, uh, pitting one against the other. And you did use that phrase. So, let's just clear that up right there.
Phrase to just reiterate that we have to have some tough conversations.
Mr. Calhoun, I think you had a question.
It's not a question. It's more so of a statement so we can move forward. Now, um, we are in year three of ESER. And I, I know we, we keep saying, um, you know, we, everybody knows the sun's setting next year. Everybody knows it's going away next, uh, next September. Um, but we know that anybody whose, uh, position is being funded by ESER right now, they know that that position may not be there next year. So, we don't have to keep saying, like, they have no idea that it's about to end. They know, we, they know that position may not come back next year if we can't find the money to keep it or it's not sustainable. So, um, if they don't know that they are on soft money, I think we should let them know right now, please. But, um, anybody who's getting, who's hired on soft money should know that they're hired on soft money. And they should not expect to be rolled over into a GOF if we don't have it. So, um, yeah, I think we, we should make that clear. I, I know we've already made that clear. I know every principal has made it clear. Every department has made it clear. This may not come back if we don't find the money for it. But I just really just wanted to toss that out there that we, nobody's out here thinking that they just have a, a, a job for life when they're on soft money.
Thank you. Dr. Temple, you have a last comment?
I mean, as we look at this ESER funding, what, what I'm concerned about is that we've put things in motion to spend and that really concerns me. So, that's why I asked the question. Um, what, how much money do we have really committed to salaries? Uh, because tho- those are promises that we have made to people. And so, we need to start looking at, um, right now, are there materials and resources and, and things that we could buy that we shouldn't be buying because we need to get to this bonus piece? And I think we need to recognize how important that is, is because our, our teachers are so important to our learning loss. And we did make a commitment to them. And so, we, we've got to look at that, that piece. And we, we can't let this ball keep rolling forward. We, we've got to put the, we know we got to put the brakes on it. Um, and of course, the teacher, this, whatever salaries are within ESER three, we're committed to that. And then that tells us what money might be free in other areas.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Dr. Gallion, I wonder if you would be willing to make a commitment to us? We made a commitment to the public before you were here. And I recognize that you walked into, uh, being required to execute on someone else's, uh, commitment. So, I recognize that's a, um, at least a difficult position, if not awkward. I wonder if you'd be willing to make a commitment to us to engage actively on this topic? Perhaps even say by Friday, you'll have conversations with people about this kind of thing. The other thing I would ask is if there's an opportunity for us to do some kind of a split where, you know, the, I, I believe it was May, April, May that we voted on this. Uh, perhaps we could do a, a, a down payment for our teachers. May, April, May that we voted on this, uh, perhaps we could do a, a, a down payment for our teachers, you know, this right, right away. And then once we find the rest of the money, do the rest in that Christmas bonus or something along that line where we could really show these teachers that we are, are making progress toward this goal.
Absolutely, sir. We, we definitely are, um, looking at all the options and those are the things I want to talk to. Hopefully by Friday. And so we can get that kind of resolved and bring that back to the Board on what that decision should look like. And then we can, um, based on those conversations, then the team and I can go back and come up with some scenarios of what we can do with what we have.
Okay. So is that a commitment to, to the Board then that you'll have at least an update for us on the Friday? Meet, uh, Friday, uh, email, assuming this storm doesn't take us out?
Assuming that we can have the meeting.
Assuming we have internet. Yeah.
That's right.
Okay. All right.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Dr. Galian.
I, I think Audit and Finance, our next meeting is like on the 8th. So, you know, I, the, the first is Friday.
The fifth.
The 10th.
It, it's the fifth.
The fifth?
Yes, sir. September 5th.
I'll remind him on the 4th.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. And, and, and really I, I think the critical thing to go back to is this money was, as well said, is was for the students. Um, you know, we did make this, you know, attempt to try to help the teachers, but that's why I, I think, um, Simmons' point about next year's reading, you know, summer reading programs. I mean, there's certain things, once you can show the impact, we've got to make sure that we, you know, can make it another year because it's just so much money and we're not going to be able to absorb all of this in one year. It's going to take multiple years to absorb what is working in ESER, which is, you know, a critical thing to look at. So I do agree with Mr. Kelly's, hopefully, you know, I, I even look at it a little differently. I think we give them a Christmas and then as we get closer to February where we know the real numbers and now we're really scrambling because it has to be spent. You know, that we do split whatever we can do, but we cannot forget that this is for the students. So anyway, thank you.
We have quote payment options. We will move on to closing items. The upcoming meetings are September the 11th for Committee of the Whole and September 25th for the Board Meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn, adjourn the Board of Trustees meeting?
They were approved when the, the consent agenda items were approved, when the agenda was approved. I know it was just a while ago.
I, I move to adjourn. Is there a second?
I don't need one.
Second?
Don't need one.